We'll call this meeting in order to Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors for July tenth, two thousand and eighteen. Welcome, Mr. Peter.
Layland.
Here.
Little.
Here.
Maxman.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here.
White.
Here. Have a moment of silence to reflect on our actions of the day.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have the agenda received.
Second.
Moving to the second area of discussion.
I was just gonna make a comment, I think we had talked about or received an email from Mrs. Nichols regarding item ten B on the ICAP settlement. And didn't know if it was the board's thoughts to maybe just table that for a week until we had more information or a chance to review it.
Does she have more information, you said?
Yes.
I thought there were recommendations for people to settle it.
It was by ICAP.
Yeah.
It was.
So that's who we hired to do the work.
I'd like to table it and see what she's got to say on it.
I just thought since they were really kind of putting ninety percent of the blame on us, I thought maybe they owed us an explanation to why that was. And that was all, just to get more information on it.
I guess we could table it when we come to that item, if somebody wants to do so.
Yeah.
All right.
I want to pay Ry.
Aye.
Oppose motion carried. Public comments, anybody from the public like to comment anything other than what's on the agenda. Moving on to claims and payments, claims and payments for the county.
The county's expenditures this week total five hundred and seven thousand, eight hundred and seven dollars and eighty-four cents, five zero seven, eight zero seven, point eight four. Approximately three hundred and forty-three thousand is for FY eighteen expenditures and a hundred and sixty-four thousand for FY nineteen expenditures. Included in FY eighteen is approximately one hundred and eighteen thousand for our CIP projects that are ongoing.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moving to the second area of discussion on this item. This is a resolution, please answer your name as called.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Maxman.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Expenditures for Country View Care Facility.
Country View's expenditures this week total twenty-one thousand, nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars and seventy cents, two one nine nine seven point seven zero.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moving to the second area of discussion on this item. This is a resolution, please answer your name as called.
Little.
Yes.
Maxman.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is the presentation.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
Uh, I'm Gary Grant, I'm one of the lobbyists for the Urban County Coalition, and this is Larry Murphy, he's the other part of our lobbying team. What we sent earlier that I hope some of you have in front of you is what I'll be referring to, it's our kind of, it's our legislative overview, and you all should have gotten an electronic copy, and if you need another one, we can certainly send you one. So what I want to do is just briefly kind of go through sort of the highlights of this. I'm happy to answer any questions, but I don't want to take up more of your time than you think is necessary, so.
Gary, for the public purposes, would you list the counties that are part of the Coalition?
Oh, sure. Yes, thank you. The Urban County Coalition is a coalition of the five largest counties in eastern Iowa, that is Blackhawk, Lynn, Johnson, Scott, and Dubuque. And they are the five most populous counties in eastern Iowa. The coalition was originally formed because urban counties face some unique challenges that aren't faced by some of the smaller, more rural counties, and it was faced to address and sort of present those, and try to help solve those difficulties that you all face at the legislature. So what we do as your lobbyist is we help you determine a legislative agenda that sort of matches up with all of the counties that are members of the legislative agenda. We educate legislators, we advance that legislative agenda, both back in the districts and at the legislature. We also during the off-season monitor regulatory changes that are going on that affect urban counties, specifically this legislative session. And I'm jumping ahead just a little bit, but I want to talk about this in the context of some of the regulatory changes that are made. All of you know that following the passage of any law, the appropriate agency is sort of, like DHS in this case, is tasked with making regulations to implement the wishes of the legislature according to the law. Well, this, one of the big bills that we're tracking this session, or this off-season is the mental health reform bill that we helped pass this session. It's a bill that moves some services into core services for regions, establishes access centers, and, you know, it kind of, it does a variety of things, but it increases a number of ACT teams. We worked with regional CEOs, you know, to help sort of with input on this bill during the legislative session. Now we're trying to make sure that when DHS writes the rules to implement this, that there are no, there's nothing that could be deleterious to you guys' ability to implement those regulations on a local level, so.
And a side note on that is, one of the priorities is, actually it was over the last two years, with Senate five oh four, which was passed last year, and dealt with these short-term funding issues, and then the mental health bill this year, there was a need to have an interim study committee this summer, so that the legislature can act on it in January of nineteen. As you all understand the politics of it, it's much easier to get whatever funding mechanism they're going to put in place for mental health in the odd number of years in terms of not facing election, that sort of thing. So the legislative council met, and they did authorize a study. And I want to thank you and many other people who both wrote letters and sent emails and everything else, because it was a very comprehensive effort from all the mental health partners. And I think there's probably about sixty-five various groups that we work with, covers from law enforcement, obviously mental health folks knows, and the advocates to move the mental health piece. So the study's lined up now, and it'll probably be, my guess is they'll probably do most of it this fall and the end before January. But that at least sets the stage for a sustainable funding system, so it's not coming back to you all as kind of the backstop for the shortfalls on the state's side. So we did get that accomplished this year, and what Gary's talking about in terms of the coalition, it's that effort by the urban county groups, as well as all the other groups that helped get that done, so go ahead.
Well, and we're going to be watching this very closely, because this, that study committee in combination with some of the new services that are recommended, that everybody believed were necessary under the mental health legislation, we do have challenges with managed care, so we want to make sure that regions aren't stuck with more than their share of the costs associated with providing some of these services. I know that right now, regions are struggling with ACT teams, and maintaining ACT teams because the way that they're funded, their ACT teams, ACT teams are sort of a, it's an acronym for Assertive Community Treatment, and what they're designed to do is to, is sort of help folks who are in crisis find the appropriate level of care. In a nutshell, it's a drastic oversimplification. But one of the struggles that regions have been having is that ACT teams operate on a twenty-four hour a day, you know, seven day a week cycle, but the reimbursement is only for five days. So that's created some challenges for finding and creating and adding ACT teams. One of the things that the mental health bill mandates that's done, but let me move back here. Backfill, I'm just going to cover these quickly. If any of you guys have questions, please feel free to stop me, I'm happy to answer any questions kind of as we move through, or at the end if you prefer. The backfill, this was a major win for sort of the local governments this year, is we stalled the rollback of the backfill for one more year. We're not entirely sure how much longer this is going to go. This backfill, as you all remember, in two thousand and thirteen, when the House and Senate passed and the governor signed the property tax relief bill, what the agreement was is that the state would backfill the dollars lost to local governments to a maximum of about a hundred and fifty-two million dollars, and we've reached that now, that's the cost of the state. Well, what we've run into in the last couple of years is the legislature now believes that that commitment was not something that they ever meant to go on forever, and everybody knew that wasn't going to go on forever, at least that's what they're telling us, which is not what they told us in the beginning. But we're committed to maintaining that in the alternative, if we are not able to maintain that, rolling it back to a degree that causes the least amount of harm to local governments. So we were able to stave off a couple of bills that suggested doing that. The one that got the most traction this year that we will probably see next year recommends rolling it back about, ballpark about thirty percent a year over three years, so phasing that out over a three-year period. We reminded legislators that this is something that they agree to do, and yes, it's painful, and yes, they're going to be making tough budget decisions just like you all make. And one of the things that I would encourage you to remind your local legislators of, because there seems to be a feeling in Des Moines that you guys don't, not you personally, but county supervisors never have to make tough budget decisions, but we would encourage you that when you see them at functions, at, you know, events, that you take the opportunity to remind them of some of the tough decisions that you all make, that, and we remind legislators that no one is more sensitive to property taxes than county boards and supervisors, because regardless of who that's collected for, the city, the school board, or the school district, the letter with the bill goes out with you guys' name on it. So if you could just remind them of some of the tough decisions you make, that might sort of help reinforce our message at the State House.
I guess Gary would like to mention that they felt that this was going to be successful when they initiated it and gave the ten percent reduction in the property tax to the industry and commercial properties, that we were going to see a five percent growth per year, because the companies would reinvest that money back into our counties. Well, Blackhawk County has seen five percent, but it's taken us five years to see the five percent growth, so we've only had one percent growth over the last five years. And that's why this is, this is a responsibility of the state, they chose to give those tax rates, and they should live up to their commitment to do it.
Oh, and we agree, and one of the other things that we remind legislators, and this is one of the things that comes into, one of the aspects that highlights the Urban County Coalition, is counties like Blackhawk and Johnson were particularly hard-hit by this, because not only was there a ten percent rollback in commercial industrial property that is backfilled by the state, what wasn't backfilled by the state was a rollback to residential rates of rental property. So when you have, and the reason, and you all know the reason that Blackhawk, counties like Blackhawk and Johnson are affected by this, is you have universities, so you have larger sort of, larger percentages of rental properties that are designed to serve kind of a transient population for students. So that particular part of the property tax relief wasn't backfilled. So not only do you have to deal with the impact of that on your budgets, but you're dealing, you might be dealing with, you know, the prospect of having to roll back the part of the backfill that you actually do get. Murphy, do you have something?
Well, and I think as we move forward, there's actually a debate going on at the gubernatorial level on this topic, because one of the candidates, I won't start naming names, so it doesn't look like we're, you know, advocating, but one of the candidates has indicated that he would be trying to reverse the ten percent reduction in commercial industrial tax, you know, citing the income tax cuts, some of the things that have gone on in other parts of government. So there will be a debate this fall about whether you retain not only the backfill, but whether you retain this, or you actually shift that ten percent valuation reduction back to commercial industrial. Now whether or not that can be passed is another challenge, but the reality is, there is going to be a debate, and the good thing about that is then you all can step in and talk about what Gary just mentioned, that that reduction in that bill did not just deal with commercial industrial, it dealt with, you know, the residential, commercial property downtown, it dealt with rental property, which again, Blackhawk and Johnson County have a lot of that, so there was an impact there that hit, you know, some of the counties a lot harder than others. But there will be a debate on it, it's a good opportunity to weigh in on that, so.
All right, I should have said this in the beginning, normally lobbyists travel in pairs, a Republican and a Democrat. There'll be a test at the end to see if you can spot the Democrat, okay? We covered mental health, are there any questions on mental health? Water quality? This was the first, essentially the first bill out of the gate, this was the water quality bill from last year that the Urban County Coalition was, in fact, not in favor of, because what it does is it diverts money from the tax on metered water, and from the Rebuild Iowa Infrastructure Fund, which are gambling funds, and puts them into programs administered by the Department of Agriculture. I think we were advocating for filling the Iowa Water and Land Legacy Trust Fund. The voters of Iowa have already spoken about how they want these efforts funded, and I don't know that there is now, or that there will be anytime soon, the political will to sort of raise that three-eighths of a cent at the state level, but we'll discuss that with the Urban County Coalition representatives from your board and others to see, you know, how they want to approach this going forward. Now, one of the things that our concern was, and not by ours, I mean the Urban County Coalition, was is that should a measure like this is passed, that the legislature would consider its sort of, you know, job done on water quality, and wouldn't enact anything else, and that does seem to be the prevailing attitude at the legislature, that now they've passed this, they want to give it a few years to work, to see whether or not, you know, this approach works. This is largely a voluntary program targeted at agriculture, the guidelines haven't been written yet, so we'll start to, you know, we'll be monitoring those as well.
Gary, when you talk about metered water, you're talking about that urban centers are the ones paying for this.
That's correct.
Because traditionally, or the fact is that rural do not have metered water, so it's the urban population that is funding this, which is inadequately funded to meet the needs.
That's correct, that was our position, and that, look, that, there is a popular turn of phrase at the state legislature that everybody, you know, when you talk about programs, that everybody needs to have skin in the game. And, you know, that was kind of, that was one of our mantras with this particular water quality bill, that we didn't think that enough people had skin in the game, that, you know, when you're talking about six million, I think it's eighteen million dollars a year, six million, six to seven million come from the tax on metered water, and then about, you know, twelve, about eleven million dollars, twelve million dollars comes from the Rebuild Iowa Infrastructure Fund, which is gambling money, part of the gambling taxes. Well, that, the only people that really have skin in the game in that scenario are the urban centers. So we're, they're taking money from urban centers and they're sending it to agriculture centers. Now, I don't know that pointing fingers about who's to blame, and that, you know, who's got a bigger, you know, is it farmers, is it, you know, urban development? I think there's enough blame to go around how we got here. Our concern is just that we would like to see better participation. If you're not going to pass a three-eighths of a cent to fill the Iowa Water and Land Legacy Trust Fund, then a better participation by both urban and rural partners, you know, in the funding of this is probably in order. So we'll, I don't know that, we'll discuss this with the Urban County Coalition, and if they want to put this back on, we can certainly, I think this is an issue that certainly the legislature needs to continue at least monitoring, if not addressing, so. Water quality questions? Supervisor districts, this was, I struggle a little bit to explain this one, because this one was targeted directly at urban counties. And initially what...
Solution in search of a problem.
It was a solution in search of a problem. It was a feeling that in urban counties, that there is, there's been, you see a lot of one-party, one-party majorities in urban counties, and the feeling was is that by forcing large counties into what they call Plan Three, which is supervisor, specific supervisor districts, that you would give the other party an opportunity to get, you know, at least one or two of the districts, you know, on five-member boards, and maybe, you know, because a lot of the boards in urban counties are larger. So we couldn't really figure out why this was such a pressing issue, other than the makeup of the current legislature, there seemed to be some frustration with the fact that, you know, one party, there's been one-party control in several urban counties for a number of years, and they didn't like that, so they wanted to see if they could change it. Well, what happened was is when we, when the Urban County Coalition intervened in this, we were able to sort of whittle this bill down so that it now only affects two counties, one of which is Polk, and the other one is Lynn. Lynn is not as affected as Polk, Polk currently elects its district, they have supervisor districts, but I don't think, I don't know if they have Plan Three. Lynn currently does have Plan Three, and what this bill essentially says is that if you are, if your population is over sixty thousand, if you ever go to Plan Three, if you want to go back, it has to move out of Plan Three, you need a two-thirds majority of voters. It only affects Lynn and Johnson now, or Lynn and Polk now, because the only counties that were forced into Plan Three are counties that are above a hundred and eighty thousand. So Lynn is already in Plan Three, and that was decided by their voters, and Plan Three is the supervisor districts, and I think Polk is, Polk might be Plan Two, I'm not sure, I don't know that they are Plan Three, but they were originally one of the targets of this legislation. So we were able to kind of stave off, let making this apply immediately to everyone, but keep that in mind that, you know, if your county wants to go to Plan Three, it requires a simple majority to do that, but a two-thirds majority if you ever want to move back. And if you ever grow above a hundred and eighty thousand, this will apply to you. So any questions on supervisor districts?
Gary, I guess before you go on too, when you talked about that, as far as impacting us, would be a hundred and eighty thousand, is there any discussion, or has there been, or any, I guess, thoughts on changing that number in the future, if they were to change that number?
I think if they, they would have stuck with a hundred and eighty thousand, I think, if they could have, or they would have lowered that number already if they could have, but we were able to convince enough legislators that this...
I think early on, they were talking about counties over like sixty or eighty thousand.
Yeah.
And I think, you know, there's probably two answers to the question. One is, and this is something that should be undone, the one piece of legislation that had value was that in those counties that have districts, having a legislative service agency, which is a nonpartisan agency, draw the boundaries, because right now, they're not, they can't do it, because, see Lynn County, which is part of the coalition, their voters have changed their form of government, both in number and going from at-large to districts twice in the last ten years. And so it certainly, there's a process there for the voters to deal with local issues. This was just an attempt by a handful of legislators who decided that they wanted to change things, and were forced on it. So when Gary says, you know, we were able to, you know, move it up to a hundred and eighty thousand, but the target was Polk, and then there was kind of a secondary thing just because of its personalities with Lynn County. But the, your point is, is that any county's growing, and Johnson and Scott are kind of nibbling right below that a hundred and eighty thousand level, and so we could, you know, start hitting other counties. The reality is, is that there's no reason for this law, and, you know, I would hopefully next year advocate that we just get rid of the thing. There is some discussion right now with Polk County and Lynn County about actually starting litigation because of that two-thirds vote requirement. All other counties have a simple majority, but a handful of counties would be required, if you're going to move out of this plan, to actually get two-thirds, so just that whole equal justice provision. So there's discussions with ISAC, I know for the urban county representatives, there's some discussion on the urban county, and Polk County is also visiting with us about whether or not they want to pursue litigation on it. So that issue's not completely dead, and I think there's probably some pretty good grounds to have it upended anyway, but, so as that develops, we'll keep you abreast of it, but there is some discussions on that as well.
I guess the bottom line is it erodes a home rule.
Yes.
Because our citizens in Blackhawk County can get a petition and choose whichever form they want to elect their supervisors by, so the state's stepping in and saying this is the way you're going to do it.
Exactly.
That's why, I guess collectively, we're much more united in the fact that it may not affect us at the hundred and eighty thousand level, but it certainly is something, an attempt to still...
They did certainly those numbers, that's right.
Yeah, appreciate that, thank you.
Lease purchase, this is a bill that the Urban County Coalition was only kind of marginally involved in, because lease purchase is not terribly, well, we were involved in it, and one of the counties was, but typically counties may consider lease purchase, but it's not often used by counties, it's more often used by cities for whatever reason. Lease purchase is simply a construction arrangement that allows, or that used to allow the selection of contractors and the letting of bids that didn't require a competitive bidding process, or the letting of contracts that didn't require competitive bidding, kind of in a nutshell. But this was, I don't want to say sort of misused, but the perception at the legislature was, is that it was misused, so the legislature altered it, altered the lease purchase in such a way that it's essentially useless as a tool now. We did oppose, we did oppose the alteration of this. The interesting thing was, is that as bad as lease purchase was seen by the legislature, the sponsor of the bill, Representative Jake Hyphill from Johnston, did see fit to exempt a lease purchase agreement in his own district from this law, so lease purchase is bad unless you use it correctly, I guess is the message.
Or use it in his district.
Or use it, so, is there any, yeah, you can't make this stuff up.
I think for the public, just so they understand, I think what it's utilized a lot for is that people can use local contractors for a large project, and have that economic stimulus stay within their community.
Yes.
Is the intended use, and that's what they're doing in Lynn County right now.
And that's exactly why they pursued it, so it was full flood recovery activity.
Well, and I would argue that, because that's, it can certainly be used for that. One of the most important reasons that it is used by local governments, though, is that it actually controls change order costs, and it can save local governments significant amounts of money on projects. And it, and it can save local governments significant amounts of money on projects. So that one of the legislate, and we ran into some, some pretty heavy opposition to this for that very, for that, for that very reason, that it was argued that, you know, you can't, you can't, you know, exercise favoritism and choose local contractors. Well, that's technically true under Iowa law. But altering this, to alter, altering this to make it useless is, didn't, didn't help local governments at all when they contract. Because even if you wanted to, to sort of select local contractors as Lynn County, Lynn County did, Lynn County ended up saving, I think, four or $5 million on their project by doing a lease purchase. So I, I think that whatever, whatever, whatever harm the legislature believed that these, that this may have done, or some of the, the contracting groups, because there are groups in Iowa, Associated General Contractors, Competitive Bidding Alliance, and there's a couple more that, 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 that their philosophy is that Iowa should be governed by a strict, low-bid, no exception way of public contracting.
And if you want, if you want an example of why the so-called competitive bid or low bid doesn't always work well, just follow the story that I think the C-RAPS Gazette's been doing on the Stedman Children's Clinic down in Iowa City. The low bid on that was like $160 million. That cost that right now is over $300 million. They're in court, they've been fighting back and forth about it because of change orders, you know, communication, miscommunication, that type of thing. So, you know, this argument that the competitive bid is the best way the taxpayers, it's like every other tool you all have. If you, if you are thorough, you do your public hearings, you do all the public input, that's the constraint on, you know, any misbehavior on your part. But it's, to say that this system works better than that system, it's really up to the individual office holders like you all that can make these things work. So unfortunately, it's, it's a tool that wasn't used much, but it was, it was one of, just a handful of tools that you all have at the local level, which now was taken from you. Again, as Frank was saying earlier, just another slap at local control, so.
Any other questions on lease purchase? Sanctuary cities. Those of you that, that may not have saw some of the coverage, and this was one of the most contentious bills this session. Senate File 481 prohibits cities and counties from adopting policies or ordinances pertaining to undocumented residents, and prohibits these entities from discouraging law enforcement officers or other from activities related to enforcing immigration laws. The Urban County Coalition took a monitoring position on this because it, it did not, there was one county that felt very strongly about it, but none of the other counties felt that it, that it dramatically impacted the way that their law enforcement agents monitored this bill. This, and it was passed and signed by the governor. So any questions on the sanctuary city bill?
And Gary just touched on something, which I think for some of the newer members, the way the coalition works is that in order for the coalition to take a position on a bill, it has to be by unanimous vote of five counties involved. So there was one county felt strongly that they should be opposed to that bill. The other four had mixed feelings, and so that's why it was not an official position taken. And so it, it's just kind of a piece of side information in terms of how your coalition operates.
Opioids. I know this was, this was a, a, one of our major concerns for the Urban County Coalition, how to deal with the opioid crisis in Iowa. House File 2237 reinstated and sort of amped up a little bit, the prescription monitoring program. And starting in 2020, all controlled substance prescriptions must be transmitted between the private, prescriber and the pharmacy electronically. Some exceptions were carved out for veterinarians. But, so I, I think that there is a long way to go on this, but this was seen as an important step. I know that there are other, we worked with other coalitions out there, they have ideas on this. And, you know, we'll meet with some of them over the summer. I know the Iowans, Iowa Harm Prevention Coalition, we've been in contact with. They're, they, they talk about needle exchanges, which is, you know, has, as an idea that's been raised by a number of folks. I know that there are mixed feelings about this in the law enforcement community, about how, how well this works. We'll just, we'll keep you updated on this. But I think the legislature, probably everybody agrees, didn't go far enough. But a robust, working prescription monitoring program is certainly a, a good first step. Any questions on opioids? Ipers. There was no discussion last year on any changes regarding Ipers. I know that there was some speculation prior to session that there, that something might happen on Ipers. This year would not have been a year that they would have probably done much with Ipers anyway, being an election year. Those changes don't tend to be very popular. The only, the only thing that we have heard, and there's nothing formal, nothing formal about this. The only thing that we have heard that the legislature may have an, an appetite to look at is having, having to do with high wage earners in Ipers. But we've seen no proposals. We've seen no, nobody seems to have an appetite to do anything with Ipers right now. It's pretty well-funded. I think it's in the 83.5%, 84% maybe, which is considered healthy. So I think that, you know, the legislature may be, may be inclined to just let sleeping dogs lie. And the, you know, we don't have the billions of dollars in unfunded pension liabilities that other states do. So doing, you know, the quote-unquote, "doing something about Ipers" is not sort of a pressing issue. I mean, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but I just, there's just no, there doesn't seem to be an appetite at the legislature to tackle or do anything with Ipers.
Until after the election, possibly.
Well, that's a possibility. And off years, you know, they, they can get up to mischief.
And I think for, and you, I think you all know this, but Ipers is the most solvent public employee retirement system in the country. So any discussion from anybody who talked about changing it, the first question has to be is why?
Okay. Let me move down here. Resolutions, one of our, one of our small victories this year. And I, we, we actually, and we're pretty, Larry and I are pretty proud of this. This is not going to sound like a big deal to you guys, but we're pretty proud of this. For the first time in either one of our memories, we actually, we agreed with the Newspaper Association on some publication requirements. So we, we think that, that achieving that's a pretty big milestone because normally, we don't agree with much of anything that the Newspaper Association has to say about, about publication requirements. And what we were able to sort of get done was allow you to publish abbreviated resolutions. Now, the only exception to those, which, and this exception doesn't really make a lot of sense, but I'm going to explain it anyway. The exception is a ballot resolution. You cannot abbreviate a ballot resolution. And we, in fact, did explain to the, the legislature that you, that auditors are required to publish sample ballots, and you're not allowed to abbreviate information, ballot information. So even if at the first reading, or upon passage of a resolution that was going to appear on a ballot, that an auditor was inclined to abbreviate, which they don't, and they, and they wouldn't do, that they would be required to republish that information anyway as part of a sample ballot. Well, as an added extra protection, because we all know that left to your own devices, you get up to mischief. The only resolutions you will not be allowed-
Grant would take exception to that.
Yeah, the, the, the only, the only, the only resolutions you will not be allowed to publish in abbreviated form are resolutions that are, they're ballot resolutions. So.
But it highlights the distrust, ill-founded, but the distrust that some legislators have for their local officials, which, you know, and you're lucky because you've got some pretty good legislators that are in here pretty regularly. But the, some folks don't have much experience in local government, so therefore they assume that you guys would try and cut corners somewhere. So the other one that Gary's looking at is on the Medicaid reimbursement for county-owned facilities. We actually got a bill drafted to that effect, but that became victim to the whole Medicaid privatization piece. There, you know, and obviously, I'm telling you something you don't, you know, you know already, is that there's so much turmoil right now with privatization. They can't even get estimates as to whether or not there are savings and that sort of thing. So that basically, while it was introduced, it was, it basically died just because anything dealing with the Medicaid reimbursement just kind of got set aside. So it, we'll continue to push that because both you and Dubuque have some interest in that. And I think until they get this, this privatization thing straightened around, it's going to be tough just to get, you know, a clear answer from, from any of the vendors.
One of the bills we were not successful in advancing to the governor is, we had a, we had some help in the House on a bill that would have allowed townships to vote on whether or not to raise their, their levy, their own levy to provide emergency medical service. And I think that's something that we'll work on again next year. We think that, that allowing, and part, there were several challenges with this bill, some of, some of which we knew. And, and I'll tell you, one of the ones that surprised me is volunteer firefighters weren't real happy about this bill because they, what they didn't want, they didn't want that rural EM, that rural fire levy, money to be taken out of that and potentially away from them to provide for rural EMS services. So we'll work on this again, I, I expect we'll work on this again next year because I know that rural EMS services is constantly a challenge, even, even for larger urban counties, that you have rural areas that, you know, could be maybe better served by, by EMS services. So we'll, we'll continue to work on that. And I think that is, I think that's all I have to cover today. I'm happy to answer any questions about those issues or anything that we didn't cover today that you have a question about.
Thank you. Thank you.
I guess the final point is that we've seen that, you know, state legislature passes a lot of laws, but many of them are unfunded and the responsibility comes back to county government.
And-
County and city government.
And those are issues that we will continue to work on specifically. This is another issue that, that was one of the governing, governing issues that formed the Urban County Coalition is urban counties bear a disproportionate burden of unfunded mandates, specifically Department of Human Services. You all know that. You, you pay rent, you pay for office expenses, you pay for expenses, you're essentially supplementing the, the budget of a state agency. Those are things we're continuing to work on. And we would hope that, we need your help when we, to do that, to highlight those. You all have your constituencies, and one of the things we would encourage you to, to help us remind your constituencies, who will help us, then again, help us remind the legislature, is that their local property taxes are going to supplement the budgets of, of some state agencies, like Department of Human Services. And while we are, we, you are certainly willing to shoulder the burden that your constituency have given you, it's unfair to allow the state to sort of balance their budget on the, on your backs. Because I think statewide, the last time we looked at this, the, we think the impact is somewhere between in the, in the six to $8 million range, just, just for the Department of Human Services. So.
And I think as, as, as you see this crop of legislators, there's really a lot of new faces both now and elected the last couple of cycles. What they don't know, and Tom and I have been around long enough to know this, at one time, you had a lot of these services delivered in the, every county. But there's been a series of consolidations, and that's why you all are sitting here with, provide that service. So you have a lot of counties that don't have an interest in the issue because they're being served out of, like, for example, the offices here in Blackaw County, but they're not paying towards that. And so that's where with, you know, particularly some of the issues we adopt, that's one that the Urban County pushes hard. ISAC is in a position where they can't because they've got members on both sides of the issue.
Certainly.
But I think as you're talking to legislators and you talk about what we call the unfunded mandate, that's part of what you really need to educate them on, is historically, this is how it was, but this is how it is now. And that's why we're subsidized, and we're you all subsidized.
Well, and you, and your regional, your DHS Regional Service Center services a number of counties. I don't know how many your Regional Service Center services. But Iowa Code actually does allow you to send a bill to the counties you serve that are served by your Regional Service Center. However, Iowa Code does not require the counties to pay that bill. So good luck with that. And this is, we've run into this in the past, that, you know, that not, we don't just believe that urban counties are being disproportionately affected. We believe that this is a bill that counties should not have to pay at all. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is received project updates from department heads and elected officials. Seeing none, move on, minutes approved for July 3, 2018.
Some move.
Second.
Moving second, any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Before you move on, I just, I'd like to make a comment. And I said, Chris, I was hoping to have an opportunity to discuss this with you before today's meeting. But it was looking at the minutes that I apologize for not being here last week. I was on vacation. But I said, when I reviewed the minutes, there was a statement made at the end in the reports and information to come before the board. I think when you were mentioning the pre-talk facilities and the star ratings and stuff on that, and some of the information that had come from staff. But I said, the comment that you made, that I guess I was questioning is, while Country View has had a four-star rating for a number of years, and that statement, I don't believe, while we've had four-star ratings over the history, we have not had it for a number of years. And I think even in information we've been provided in the last week or so, we saw that our, our ratings overall had been in the two- and three-star range. We maybe, I said, had some four. And I know Carol was good to come to us in, I think, May and tell us how pleased that you and the staff and everyone was, that had worked hard and wanted the board to know that we had received a four-star rating. And the staff, obviously, part of that and should be commended for it. But I, my point is not really looking at the, the ratings and saying, you know, what our staff does or what they don't do, or that someone else is better. It's just not, and not in any way to take away from our employees and how hard they work, but to just be careful to not be so critical of others that are working hard in the same field to do the same things. And often, we've seen, I think, at our own facilities, we've come, we had shortcomings as well. We've had citations, we've had fines, we've had terminations. So it's sometimes just that snapshot at one particular time where you're fortunate or unfortunate because of incident or some things maybe caused you to lose a rating, and it takes a long time to work up to that. But I just wanted to be, I guess, accurate with the statement that we really weren't a four-star rating for a number of years. So I'm sorry I didn't get you before today's meeting, but I wanted to mention that I was going to do that, with that correction I'd like to make.
With that correction, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Close motion, aye. Next is hearings, times approximate, I don't know, five. We'll get to that as soon as we finish with the rest of the agenda. Next, sent agenda by resolution.
Some move.
Second.
Moving second, any discussion on these items? All in favor, or this resolution, please answer your name as called.
Maxman.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Next, number nine, contracts and agreement. This is received from WBC, Mechanical Waterloo, Iowa for a water heater replacement at Country View, and the amount of $42,394 be approved as recommended by Carol Laurie, provisional administrator.
Some move.
Second.
Moving second, discussion.
Is this already in? Is it already installed?
No.
Carol, could you perhaps give an overview of the importance of, of this second water heater at the facility?
Certainly. Carol Laurie, provisional administrator, Country View. Our water heater is a, it's a, we have two of them, basically. And one of them is a backup for the other one. So just to give you an example, last weekend, we had an issue with the one water heater, and we would need to have backup for the other one. Our- Our, one that is broken is actually leaking through a tube, and it cannot be repaired, so at this time, we really do not have an efficient backup. At that point, we were able to utilize the old one just for a short period of time, until we got the repair done, but it, we don't have that, we do not have hot water for our resident, our kitchen, our laundry, any sanitizing that we have to do is completely out of order, and would have to be done using different alternate methods.
Are there plans to replace the other one, Joe?
The other one has actually been replaced more recently. I'm sorry, I do not know the exact year of that.
I, by accident happened to run across that, and saw that we purchased it in 2016, and I wondered then if there was a warranty on that, or if we had, because I think we just, like you said, recently had a-
When it broke, two weeks ago, just the part broke, was actually the later purchased one. The one that we're replacing is quite a bit older.
No, that one I knew was, okay.
Does that work under warranty then?
But in the previous-
The item, it was just a module that was cracked, that was broken, so.
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. I have a motion and a second on the floor, this resolution, please answer, your name is called.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Maxman.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is other business. This resolution, at the request for purchase of capital equipment submitted by Kim Vider, IT Director, be approved, direct to Chair of the same, signed for same, purchase five licenses for Microsoft Office, Word, and Excel, in the amount of one thousand fifty-one dollars and five cents.
Some move.
A second.
Move to second, any discussion on this item? This resolution, please answer, your name is called.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Maxman.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. This is the resolution to approve the Iowa community's assurance pool settlement of two thousand nine hundred and seventy-four dollars and sixty-seven cents in the matters of the claim, Caleb Mulder versus Blackhawk County claim involves an automobile collision between claimant and a Blackhawk County engineer pile truck.
Well, this was the item I just had asked if we'd want to table it for a week, just to make sure we have all the information, so that was just my request.
Did you want to table it?
Yes, I'd like to for a week.
And a motion?
Yes, if it needs a motion, I'll make a motion, that we tabled this item for one week.
A second.
Move to second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Proposed motion carried. Next is nine fifty-two, this is a hearing on a proposed ordinance number seventy-seven dash two oh seven, the Sherri zone.
Motion received, placed on file for publication.
Second.
Move to second, any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Proposed motion carried. Motion to waive the first reading.
Some move.
This was published on June twenty-ninth.
Second.
Move to second, discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Proposed motion carried. Motion to close the hearing after all written comments were hard received and placed on file.
Some move.
Second.
Move to second, any written comments?
No, sir.
You're upset.
Okay. Okay, yeah, this is a request. The Planning and Zoning Commission at its regular meeting on April seventeenth, two thousand eighteen, reviewed the request by Philip Shirk to rezone seven point zero eight acres from a agricultural district to a agricultural residential district to allow for the construction of three new single-family homes. The property is located at eight nine zero two, Dyzart Road. And then for, for the ruling, it was, from the, where the recommendation Planning and Zoning Commission, it was moved by Sage, seconded by SAC, did an either request, rezone seven point zero nine acres from a agricultural residential to allow for the construction of three single-family homes. Motion denied, carried unanimously. Members of the Planning and Zoning Commission were concerned about taking prime farmland out of, out of production. The seven point zero eight acres in question is located at eighteen oh two, which is approximately south of Dyzart Road and the east Shrock Road intersection. Rezone area is currently zoned agricultural district, consists of homes and outbuildings. Surrounding area consists of agricultural lands with some rural homes and a zoned agricultural district to the north, south, east, and west. The rezone area is designated as agricultural on the future land use map component of the Blackhawk County Comprehensive Land Use Plan. Surrounding area is designated as agricultural to the north, south, east, and west. None of the area for the proposed rezone is located in a special flood hazard area. The site land evaluation score was ninety-five, with a least a score of two fifty-seven, indicating high agricultural value. The applicant was just to rezone seven point zero eight acres from eight AR in order to build three new single-family homes. The rezone area consists of one parcel, and if the rezoning is approved, there are plans to plat the parcel and the three lots through the minor plat process. The parcel is large enough to accommodate three developable lots that meet the lot and size requirements for the agricultural residential district by being greater than one point five acres in size and wider than a hundred and fifty feet. The property has a least a score of two fifty-seven out of three hundred, which is considered high agricultural site. The zoning ordinance notes that land is classified as having high agricultural value, should be strongly discouraged for development in almost every case. Also states, in general, these sites are reserved for agricultural activities and protected from urban development or urban use encroachment. However, the ordinance also states that under very unique circumstances, all three of these sites to be developed and only after compelling evidence is provided, the owner says, less several criteria that could be considered unique compelling evidence, they are as follows, areas not been in active row crop production or conservation reserve program for the previous fifteen years, area is not conducive to production by reason of parcel shape and size, area is compatible with surrounding uses of similar adjacent uses, meaning any, one of these criteria does not constitute approval, as each request will be reviewed and evaluated based on its individual circumstances. It should be noted that the northern parcel contains outbuildings, a home, and a few trees, the majority of the northern parcel has not been farmed for several years. The applicant previously requested a rezone seventeen point nine acres from eight agricultural residential to allow for the construction of six new single-family homes, but the request was unanimously denied by the Planning and Zoning Commission on March twentieth. This request is different, because it simply involves rezoning seven point zero eight acres from a agricultural district to agriculture residential district to allow for the construction of three new homes in one parcel. In addition, the parcel that is being rezoned is over fifty percent developed with home and farm buildings, the remainder of the parcel has not been farmed for several years. Piper indicated that the previous submission for eight nine zero two Dyzart Road involved a rezone request for seventeen point four nine acres agricultural, agricultural district to agriculture residential district in order to construct six new homes and two parcels, and it was unanimously denied by the Planning and Zoning Commission on March twentieth. Request is different, because it's only requesting to rezone seven point zero nine acres from eight AR to construct three single-family homes. Shannon Glover also noted the high land evaluation score of ninety-five, and least a score of two fifty-seven, which does indicate high agricultural value of the land, and that's the staff report.
This one was voted down?
Yeah, yeah, they, there was a, originally, and there was some miscommunication to the, because we, I think we sent out notices, and then we changed the meeting to six, so I think they showed up at seven, so just wanted to also point that out there, so they didn't get the opportunity to kind of plead their case, you know, which, which I thought would, you know, be good that-
Plead their case where, at the P and Z?
Or, or, or here at the, I mean, or, yeah, P and Z, there, there was some miscommunication, because the meeting was moved from seven to six, so they showed up at seven, so.
So they didn't get an opportunity at P and Z, is what you're saying?
The, the first time around they did, but the second time around they-
This one here that we're deciding today.
Yeah.
I don't know if I like that.
So why won't you reschedule it?
Um.
Seeing as how it was your fault.
I mean, we, we, I don't, I just thought that-
How'd they vote on it if they didn't have any discussion?
Um, they, they had some people that were there in opposition.
Oh, the party involved wasn't there?
Yes.
So, party involved wasn't there, you had people were there, how the people that, that were there know, but that the time had changed?
Um, yeah, no, I don't, I, I-
Don't know.
I can answer that, I'm sure it was because of the wind turbine, because it affected all the people that were there against it.
Yeah.
I can answer that.
They changed the time, six to seven, and then they-
Seven to seven.
And that, yeah, failed to miss, you know, so there was miscommunication.
The question I have on the high least a score, now, when you developed that least a score, is that based on the specific area being rezoned, or is it based on the area around, square mile around it, or how is the least a score?
The least a score is determined by looking at that parcel, and, and then the main parcel around it, so it, it, it would have taken into account the, the larger, or the original portion of the parcel, as well as the, the smaller land.
Three-fourths of it, or, you know, about three-fourths of it has never, or hasn't been in production, is, has buildings sitting on it.
Yes, that is correct.
So I just wonder how a high least a score can be attached when it's been out of production and has buildings on that for a number of years. I drove out there yesterday and looked at it.
Yeah, yeah, well, the, the least a score is, is-
I mean, that was a premise that they voted down, correct?
Correct.
Is it possible, Seth, that they could have, like, as a recourse, they could go back to the P and Z and then come to us?
They should, they should.
I was going to say, I know we usually tend to be that second ruling or whatever, based on the-
Well, obviously, the day if we took action, it takes a supermajority.
Right.
Yeah.
And do you feel, could we talk to the people up the podium?
Sure.
Whoever's involved there? Do you feel you didn't get a chance to explain it at P and Z?
We did not.
We did not.
From the very, let me start back. In nineteen eighty-five, my father's health was declining, so at that time, he went and had the pasture rezoned, so that it would be for a single house, or a single home dwelling, and we ran the city water, stopped up the road, we ran the city water down to the main house, also so that it would be available for building in the pasture. I've talked to Seth yesterday at the office, and he said, yes, this, well, when we listed the house for sale in April, we told him it was listed as two building lots. It took till November for us to find any record down at the rezoning committee that, yes, in fact, this is zoned for building. When I talked to Seth yesterday, again, I wanted to, to make sure this was addressed. Yes, we can build on this pasture, it's on, on file, not a problem. I don't know, when they voted on it, it was strictly agricultural top land. This is rock land, it's pasture.
It's solid rock. Were there people there opposed against Seth?
Yeah, there was a few people that-
What was their reasoning?
They just didn't want any additional homes in the area.
Now, how close were they?
Yeah, we, within probably five hundred feet to the-
One had just gotten approval for, he is farming the land around it.
So you were denied the first time years ago, or a few years ago?
No, this was just, this was just in-
Recently.
Yeah, in March.
March.
Originally, they, I mean, the, the Planning and Zoning Commission had them, you know, present the rezone for, for both parcels, and it was unanimously denied, so we gave them the option to come back and then just-
Okay.
But I don't think they ever understood, we had the permission from the rezoning committee to build on this.
For the two lots.
So you had no communication with the P and Z the night they voted?
No.
No.
See, I would suggest-
Not the second time, the first time, yes.
Yeah, but we're, you're dealing with the second time, first time was done and over.
Right.
I would suggest it goes back to the P and Z at no cost to you folks.
Okay.
And be scheduled as soon as possible, and so they can plead their case to the P and Z, and then it comes to us, because today it takes a supermajority, and, and to be honest with you, they denied it seven nothing. That doesn't look good. So you should have the opportunity yourself to present your case to them, and I'm really surprised they even voted that night, you think they would have tabled it, but there was a mix-up in times, that's fine, but Seth, I'd like to see that go back.
Sure.
Scheduled soon as possible, and at no cost to the individuals.
Yeah.
I would, I would agree on this, because as, as it's here on the agenda, I would vote in favor of, of the change in the ordinance.
So, as soon as possible, I guess, get it scheduled, reschedule that.
I would go for it.
Yeah.
It's, it's just that I've always been a-
I think it should go back to planning and zoning, because-
Yeah, I do too.
They haven't had the opportunity to present their information to them.
It's just been kind of a ping pong ball here.
They have a river waiting to buy it.
Well, it was, it's unfortunate, and the mistakes do happen, and apologize for that, the only thing we can do is try to make it as fair as possible.
Pete, do you have something?
Yes, there should be a motion to return it to planning and zoning, because of an error.
I made that motion.
Second.
And that, that could close the rest of it out?
Okay.
And we can just close the rest of it out for that?
Yes, that's great.
I have a motion and a second on the floor to, to send it back to P and Z.
Because of an error.
Yeah, technical error.
This is a resolution, please answer, your name is called.
Yes.
Maxman.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
White.
Yes, a resolution adopted.
Do we need to do anything else, Pete?
No, that's sufficient.
It's all yours.
Next, is any reports or information from the board?
As mentioned, I've got another one of my town halls tomorrow night in Cedar Falls at five thirty, no particular topic for this one, so just kind of a, a listening post for residents in the county.
Did you say where?
At the Cedar Falls Library.
Also, I'd like to send out condolences to one of the people out of Countryview passed away the other day, Richie Lance, a long time resident out there, probably ninety percent of his life has spent at Countryview. There was his sister and his, another brother, his sister passed away a couple years ago, so now the only, only brother's left is David, so sending condolences out to the family. With that, I entertain a motion for adjournment.
Some move.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
We are.